The council, town staff, members of public, thank you so much for being here. It's always a pleasure to see you. Call this meeting to order. Call the roll, please. Russell?
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. You all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda, Water Conservation Month. And I don't know if I saw December walking by or not, but we have a proclamation and recognition of Water Conservation Month. And if I can read it for the record on behalf of Town Council. Water Conservation Month for April 2015, whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and the town of Southwest Ranches are going to work together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas April typically a dry month and water demands are highest and annually designated as, and there's December, as Water Conservation Month educates citizens about how they can help save Florida's previous water resources, and whereas the town of Southwest Ranches encourages and supports water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference and help by efficiently using water, thus promoting a healthy economy and community, and now therefore the Town Council and myself as the mayor of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Water Conservation Month, and call upon each citizen in business in the town of Southwest Ranches to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. December, I'm gonna get you to come up, and if I could get the council to come up so I can present this proclamation to December. Needless to say how important water is, just asked the residents of California recently of an extended drought on the west coast, and great commitment and proclamation.
Would you all carry our bottles of water?
That's not a bad idea.
Not a bad idea. It's always beauty before age.
Very gracious of him.
Beauty before age, I'll leave here.
Congratulations.
Do you all certify your properties? Do you certify your properties?
Oh, yeah, good to have you.
I'm certified, I will tell you what it is.
I don't need your word of affirmation.
Let's get the little check on it.
Along with the two thousand five, except the south, away from the second one, so on the third, if what the president wants.
Ready?
The main question is this council, one of the people who agrees.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just like the one that I mentioned.
And that's for us taking the correct part.
Correct.
All right. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Russell for the record. Confirm the process, and then I'll, Keith, you'll take it from there, or you'll take it from there?
Yeah, I'll think it real quickly, Mayor.
Okay.
The rules for quasi-judicial hearing is written in everything we do, and on the agenda tonight, if anyone would need some read into the record, please advise. If not, we're not gonna read them into the record. Seeing none, we will dispense with actually reading and just incorporate it by reference. Russell, if you could please read the first item.
It's a waiver of plat, consideration of waiver of plat application WP-011-15, Carla Wolfson owner, Police Land Surveyors, Inc., petitioner to subdivide a 4.3 acre parcel to create two lots of 2.1 and 2.2 net acres respectively. Property generally located on the southwest corner of Southwest 173rd Way and Southwest 61st Court within the Rural Ranches zoning district, which allows one dwelling unit per two net acres, legally described as the south half of Track 9 in the northeast, one quarter of Section 6, Township 51 South, range 40 East, according to the plat of Chambers Land Company. Subdivision as recorded in plat book one, page five of the public records of Broward County, Florida, less and accept road right-of-way. Said land situate lying and being in the town of Southwest Ranches, Broward County, Florida.
Thank you. Jane, are you representing the applicant? If you could please come forward, state your name, and then we'll swear everyone in.
Jane Storms, Police Land Surveyors, 5381 Nob Hill Road, Sunrise, Florida.
Thank you. Russell, if you could swear everyone in who wants to. Anyone who wants to speak on this waiver of plat needs to be sworn in. It's quasi-judicial, have to stand, raise your right hand. If you want to speak, now's your chance to be sworn in.
Okay. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
They remove them.
All right.
Jeff, would you like to present the staff report?
Good evening. This is a 4.3 net acre parcel that's at the southwest corner of Southwest 61st Court and Southwest 137th Way in Rolling Oaks. It is currently an agricultural parcel. It has a almost full ag exemption. It has a canal along the south property line and an easement that is not included in the net acreage. The applicant is asking to divide this into two properties. Dividing one lot into two for single-family home purposes no longer requires plating, and the town has substituted this waiver of plat process just to make sure that all subdivisions are complying with the zoning regulations. Both properties will have over two acres. They have access, the southern property, a lot that will be created will have access from the cul-de-sac, and the northern property being created will have access from either street. The applicant currently lives on the southern parcel. There are a handful of buildings that don't meet setbacks. All, the applicant has stated that all of the non-agricultural buildings that don't meet the setbacks have been removed, and the actual splitting of the two, of the property into two lots is not creating any setback issues. A 20-foot drainage easement has been granted to the South Broward Drainage District at its request along the west property line, and a corner court has been dedicated at the intersection at the town engineer's request. So staff, we find, sorry about that, that the application meets the requirements for consistency with the land development code and recommend approval subject to the two conditions being, number one, that the approval does not become effective until the resolution is actually recorded in the public records, and B, standard cost recovery and administrative fee requirement.
Thank you. Any council member have any questions of Jeff at this time? Seeing none, Jane, do you have our presentation? Seeing none, any council member have any questions of Ms. Storms at this time? No, seeing none. We will end that section. Does any member of the public have any comment? Seeing none. Does applicant have any final comments? Seeing none. Jeff, do you have any final comments?
I'm good.
Mayor, turn it over to you for deliberation.
That might be record. We need to record that one in the history of the town of Southwest Ranches for quasi-judicial item. I think that's probably the fastest. Council, turn it over to you for motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve with the two.
Second. Two conditions. Got a motion and a second to approve with the two conditions. Any additional questions, comments?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Doug.
The buildings or items that were there that have been removed, did somebody go inspect that they've been removed, or they're going to be removed?
The applicant has stated that they have been removed.
Okay, but nobody's confirmed that.
We have not confirmed it, no.
Okay. I'm just curious why nobody would confirm something like that, but that's.
Jane Storms, for the applicant, they weren't really buildings, they were like sheds, they're tool sheds and things.
Mm-hmm.
She did promise me that she did move them, the 10 feet off of the.
Off of where the line would, new line would be?
Correct. They were, they were 10 feet off of the property line, so they had to be moved 15 feet off for the 25-foot setback, so they moved them more than the 15.
Okay, I just didn't want there to be any issues later on that we didn't inspect and know that they got moved or whatever, so I don't, I don't want us to get caught in a ringer because we didn't go out and check, so I don't know if there's something, I don't have an issue with what we're doing, I just want to make sure that the issues with whatever structures were there don't become a problem down the road.
The town can always inspect prior to recordation of the reso if that's what the council desires.
Okay. Confirmation that deed did take place, no problem with that.
I mean, I'll prove it.
Yeah. Thank you, Doug. Any other additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Good to see you again, thank you. Item number five, public comment.
Mayor.
That concludes our quasi-judicial items, and moving into item number five, public comment.
Mayor, the rules for public comments are on the record. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We have only one speaker tonight, Barry Nunzick.
Good evening, gentlemen, Barry Nunzick, 163rd and Sterling Road. I'm here for your April Fire Department report. Okay, the Station 6891 are doing their fine, excellent work, again, without the use of the volunteers, and there are no issues there. Station 112 is still giving good service. The volunteers are still following them out and watching them do the work, but Davy's doing an excellent job. I believe that we need to make a process to address concerns with the different things that the volunteers are doing, so that you guys can actually get some corrections made. One of the items that I'd like to see get corrected is, is, and it's March issue for the town newsletter, the volunteers wrote in here that they can provide ALS service, right? Now, they may have the training, they may have the knowledge, but they don't have the equipment, so they cannot provide ALS service. It gives the people a wrong impression, and it's just not proper to do that. So, there should be a correction put in the next newsletter stating that the volunteers only do BLS work, because people need to know what the real deal is. They should not be depending on them to do ALS when they cannot do it when they arrive. I have a problem with Chief Bennett not answering public information requests. I've asked him for items, and he just totally disregards me. He even disregarded me while I was on the fire advisory board. And that's something that needs to be corrected, whether it's a member of the fire advisory board or any board, or just a member of the public. We have a right to that information, it is their duty to provide it for us.
Absolutely.
As you guys know, I check the calls, I see who's doing what. I still find on the official record that the volunteers, on the official record show that they are not responding to calls. That needs to be investigated, that needs to be found out if they are or are not responding to all their calls, and if BSO dispatch is making an error, it needs to be corrected. Things need to be proper. Some good news, I was doing some research, and I found out that Weston Station 55 for BSO now has a brush truck. It's a 2014 brush truck is what I was told, and this information I confirmed this last Tuesday. So, that's a four-wheel drive brush truck. One other item, real quick, is, I know you guys are looking at the Broadwing property, I still think it's a mistake to go out there, it'd be better to try to find property in the 190th area and concentrate on that. I was told that there may be some property available in that area, and one of the problems was for funding. Well, one way you can get around the funding is a lease option. You do a lease option, you can tie that property up, and then you can start a process. Be better to do that, take whatever funds you're gonna spend on the Broadwing, put it into the 190th property, put a temporary building there, move Davy there, so you have a better response for ALS unit. You would no longer need the volunteers, and with the property, if you design it right, even with the temporary building, you could build a permanent station behind it, you wouldn't have to move anything else, you could put the parking lot in the right spot, and it would just save the town a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. All right, that was the only speaker. That concludes public comment. Transitioning into item number six, which is board reports, and members of, any boards have anything to update us on or anything to say? No, things are going exceptionally well, and that's a good, that's a good thing. That concludes item number six. Item number seven, council member comments. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items just want to update on. Number one is the Parks Board. We have a new representative that is applying to do that, and that's Debbie Green. Appreciate Debbie volunteering to do that, and so along with Nancy Hartman and John Herring, we have three, three folks from country states, so that's great. I wanted to report that Andy and I went and spoke to the individual at Broward County Schools that's in charge of buses there, and we had a great conversation with, with the individual and a couple of his assistants, and talked about, you know, his last name is Mr., is Chisholm, I can't remember his first name.
Eric Chisholm.
Eric Chisholm, thank you, Andy. And had a great conversation with him, and we talked really about two issues. One is that Section 185th, 186th, 188th, where they are, for middle school, they're within two miles of the middle school there, and so they don't have the option of a school bus pickup, but it is a very difficult walk because of the low, the poor drainage in the area, and having to go across Sheridan, and the heavy traffic that's on those roads. So, we talked to them about the possibility of having a pickup there. There's really nothing they can do for this year, they checked it out, there's no capacity on the bus this year, but that varies every year. A year ago, there was capacity, and they were able to do it. So, but the important thing was that Eric pointed out to us that there is a bit of a process to that, so the first step is to get our name, get a letter written out there to say that, hey, we want us to be considered for that, and the way that works is that letter then is on file, nothing gets done during the month of September, but on October 1st, they pull those out and see what the capacities are, and we should know fairly quickly thereafter when we're there. So, I'd like to have Andy write that letter, I wanted just to confirm that you all are okay with writing that letter to put that.
Absolutely.
Write the letter.
Yeah.
Great. Perfect, thank you.
The other thing that we talked a little bit about was the potential, I know it's not there yet, but we just wanted to be prepared ahead of time, the potential of the gate on 190th, and how that might affect the, the bus flow through that section of town. And there are some challenges there, the things that, there are some options though as well. Eric pointed out that if there is a consistent source that they can call to have them open the gate for the bus on a regular basis, then they will allow the bus to go through there, so that was good. We don't really have a volunteer, well, you know, didn't want to get the cart in front of the horse, but, but we're just trying to walk through it. So, that's, that's an option. We also may want to look at, you know, some sort of a turnaround somewhere around in there, if that's not, if that doesn't work out, but there are some options there. So, I just want to report back to you that conversation as well. The last thing I wanted to touch on was just, for the last about six or seven weeks, I've been taking a course with the town of Davie in their Citizens Police Academy, and I gotta tell you that I'm having the time of my life there, and it's just more fun than you can imagine, and it's, and it's highly educational too, which is, you know, an incredible combination. So, we've done, you know, all kinds of things, the K-9 demonstration, the, I went one Saturday from 2:00 in the morning, in the afternoon till midnight, went on a shift, and was on the east side of town of Davie. I could've come out to Southwest Ranches, but, you know, this is, this is a good thing, this is a good thing, but I didn't want to experience it, but everybody, we had three or four people that had done their ride on Southwest Ranches. Nothing happened, nothing happened, you know, so it's a beautiful thing. It's a beautiful thing, I'm not complaining at all, but I will, I will confess that I volunteered to, please send me over to the east side of Davie, please, and had a great ride. It was, it was busy, you know, start to finish. It never, never stopped, literally never stopped. Variety of stuff, everything from a dead body to several domestic disputes, to a potential suicide, to an armed robbery, to, I mean, it was, it was non-stop. A Baker Act, I mean, it was just non-stop the whole time. It was, it was a real education, and to be able to participate and get to know an officer that's, you know, for 10 hours, you start to get to know them a little bit, just what a professional, what, what a great experience. And they do this twice a year, it's like semesters once in the spring, once in the fall, so I just throw it out there, I would encourage anyone, if you have any interest on that at all, I would encourage you to do it, you will, you'll be glad you did, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Doug?
Go ahead.
I'm good. Freddie?
Yeah, well, today was my MPO day, so I had a chance to talk to Brian Kleckie about I-75, we talk about it every time, and he says that the bus stop is dead, and they're kind of keeping it dead, so right now, every time they bring it up, he gets it killed, so we're good there. I had a chance to talk to Lois Wesley about, on 188th Avenue, but it wasn't a very good conversation, because she said, Freddie, I'm disgusted, I've sent all that stuff to Andy, and, and he's got everything, so I'm all set, because I got a meeting with Andy. So, I go, I go talk to Andy, he said, I ain't heard from her. So, Andy, I went home and tried to find her on the website, I haven't got her yet, but I'm gonna send her an email and ask her what's, what's going on, but she did say, and we know that, that we need a resolution. I'm hoping we plan to do that here tonight, or get the resolution anyway, but she said we need that to even, even get it going, so we need to move, move on that. One of the things, the people from the railroad made a big presentation today, and they got big plans for US-27. It's in their plans that it's gonna be a railroad on the west side of US-27. Let's see what else I got, that's all. That's about it.
Thank you, Freddie. You're it? Yeah. I'll be brief, just very quickly, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Just a couple of public service announcements, this Saturday is Hazmat at the Barn in Rolling Oaks Park, great time to get rid of all your used, leftover paint and the whatnot, the staff's very cheery, everybody's there waiting for you, you never even have to get out of your vehicle. It's really a good thing, and so I encourage everybody to use it. The other thing coming up on May 30th, Saturday, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park, is the Education Advisory Board Food Truck Event. It's one of the primary funders for the scholarships, and I encourage everybody to come out, it's always a lot of fun, we always, you know, we always enjoy ourselves on that, and we have a beautiful park on top of it to show off. And other than that, I'm speechless.
Thank you, Gary. Couple of things, item 15 is, is an add-on item that I had requested, and we'll talk about that in a minute, because it is an upcoming item. I want to thank Keith and Andy for settling me down yesterday, because sometimes when you get inspired and motivated by emotion, we sometimes don't think rationally, but I gotta tell you, it was close, I had Gay on standby, and I think you all have a pretty good idea what was going on with regards to 207th and 54th Place, what they've done out there. Been out there several times, in fact, Wes is here, had an extended conversation with him yesterday and, and today, and again, it's item 15, and what they've done out there is just unbelievable, and appreciate you allowing me to add this to the, to the agenda. Again, thanks to Keith and, and Andy for settling me down. I also want to recognize the prestige, and I know you see this throughout the town, they are just doing one heck of a job, you know, in the, in the parks, in the, in the medians, I mean, it's just, what a, what a difference. I mean, it really is remarkable, the improvement and, and what's going on with regards to, you know, those areas that are being landscaped by, by prestige. So, I just want to say thanks to you, Andy, the staff, you know, with regards to this new vendor and the new specs, obviously, it's a little bit more money, but I guess the old saying, you get what you pay for, but just doing an outstanding job, just want to commend, commend them. So, with that being said, that concludes my comments. Moving into item number eight, which is legal comments. Keith?
Mayor, do you want to touch at all on the Southwest Ranches Pembroke Pines hearing that both you and Commissioner McKay attended a week and a half ago?
Yeah, we can, absolutely, that was the motion for, thank you, Keith.
Summary.
For summary judgment that was heard, was about a week and a half ago or so, approximately, and you are familiar with, with that issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, we're focusing on one component of one of the inter-local agreements that we think is very, very obvious, and again, Keith will touch on that. Each side had an hour, Bruce Johnson representing the city of Pembroke Pines, and Alfredo representing the town of Southwest Ranches, and I don't, I know you've met Alfredo, because we had an executive session or two, and he just seemed like a very meek, reserved, quiet kind of, you know, personality. But let me tell you something, when he gets in that courtroom and advocating on behalf of his client, I gotta tell you, it was, it was a personality I hadn't seen before, and it was, it was quite a show, and I won't tell you what I said to Keith and Andy after it was over, but I thought he did a heck of a job. I think that probably what's going to happen, and this really is what Keith had, had said, and essentially denied, because they also had filed a motion for summary judgment as well. I don't know, the sky is purple because the leaves are yellow. I didn't really understand the, the argument, but I suspect what's probably gonna happen, I think Keith has already said for the record that they're gonna deny both motions for summary judgment, we're gonna go to trial, and I suspect sometime in a year or so, Keith, maybe a little bit longer than, than that, you know, they might, the judge might surprise us, because, you know, those agreements were, were very clear. The provisions in those agreements were very clear, both with the non-interference and expeditiously approve water and sewer, and I gotta give Keith a tremendous amount of credit as well to include those provisions in those agreements, knowing exactly what probably was gonna transpire. I keep trying to, you know, see if he can come up with the lottery numbers, because he does such a good job at prediction, predicting, you know, scenario of events, but it's very interesting, and Keith will touch on this, because I don't know, we thought that maybe in a very short period of time, because the judge gave us the impression that she was gonna work on it over the weekend, and then maybe get something to us, but, but we shall see, but I gotta tell you, I'd be very, very proud of Alfredo and his passion and, and what he did representing our interests with regards to that hearing. And again, a simple, simple lawsuit, it's, you know, a simple contract, the language is, is there, and no question in my mind and anybody else that's familiar with this lawsuit, that they absolutely unequivocally violated both the provisions and both of those agreements. We've got plenty of evidence to support that position, and we'll see what happens. We're looking forward to going to trial before a, before jury. I know that there's some additional things that still, that you were contemplating as part of the legal, legal strategy, but Keith, I'll turn it over to you for, I'm sure, a lot that I missed.
No, Mayor, I think you, you did a good job, but I'll just be very brief, I know I brought this up at two council meetings ago, so I'll say it again. Pines has one legal argument, and that is that our, both our contracts with them were illegal, and they were never legally allowed to sign them. They claim that they're ultra-virus because of the fact that it forces them to do something that, and you can't force a council or commission to, you can't force future councils for doing anything. I don't really follow their argument, I don't think it has much logic, because if the judge found in their favor, essentially, every governmental agreement would be deemed to be invalid, because every agreement impacts other commissions, including their own w-. be invalid, because every agreement impacts other commissions, including their own water agreements, that they provide water, you know, in sewer service to residents in our community and elsewhere, would all be invalid. So that's their one argument, and they even told the judge at the hearing, the facts don't matter, the agreements were illegal, we were never legally allowed to enter into them.
Read our response.
Yes, and, and that was essentially their argument. Our argument, we didn't get into in, in court, in the motion for summary judgment, the interference argument, why it's very fact-intensive, and that requires a trial. Did Angelo Castillo go to Washington, D.C.? It's a fact. Did, I recite, say this to the media, X, Y, and Z, that's a matter of fact, it needed to go to trial. But what doesn't need to go to trial is one agreement that says they're required to provide water and sewer service to the town, to the town's correctional facility. Did they provide it? Yes or no? It's not a, a question of fact. You either provided it or you didn't, and they haven't provided it. And for us, that was why we applied for summary judgment. Pines tried to make a factual distinction there by throwing in that their code didn't allow them to approve it, and they're trying to muddy the water, they're doing that to try to get around summary judgment. But at this point, I still believe the judge will allow it to go to a jury, and I think, your estimate's correct, I think it will be within a year that this will finally be wrapped up and go to a jury. The major difference between our case and the Pines CCA case is that ours does go to a jury, and there's, they let a judge decide. And I always feel that a jury in this scenario will be a great benefit for the town to hear everything that transpired. In other CCA news, they have renewed their plat application with Broward County, to state that on the record, because everyone says, what's going on with CCA? So they obviously are still interested in finding that partner for development out there, so they renewed their plat with Broward County, and we got notification, I think this week, Andy, that they were renewing their plat with Broward County. So that goes back to the county for the renewal process. The town this week was found to be one of 22 municipalities in Broward County to have been found to meet all of Broward County's ethical guidelines. So that means one-third, essentially, of all municipalities in Broward County were found not to have satisfied Broward County guidelines. We get the, the report, and I know the mayor likes to go through it, so we'll go through it real quickly. Of complaints against the town, Ryan Greenberg complained that the town officials didn't inform her about the federal prison, and they said they weren't investigating it, and the insufficient grounds. There was an anonymous tip, the council member McKay acted as a real estate broker for this property. The OIG investigated, found no grounds, and closed it immediately. Ryan Greenberg called again the OIG and said that the town was not properly handling affairs related to the detention center. Once again, they closed it immediately without review. Ron Negro alleged that the town was selectively enforcing him in code enforcement. They investigated it and found zero grounds to continue. Another tip, saying that alleged the town was keeping the residents uninformed about the prison, that was closed immediately. Barry Nunzig alleged that there was a conflict of interest against all five council members because of the role as, as a board of directors for the volunteer fire department. The OIG reviewed and said, even if it's true, it's no violation, and closed it. Jill Aronofsky alleged that the mayor of the town Southwest Ranches is not residing in the town, and the OIG determined it was factually unfounded. Allegation came in that Doug McKay was using his position of influence to stop code enforcement from citing the prominent Southwest Ranches residents, and the OIG investigated and dismissed it, saying that there was no grounds and was unfounded. Jill Aronofsky alleged that council member Doug McKay hired myself to handle personal matters. The OIG said that the allegation, even if it was correct, is completely insufficient grounds, and closed the matter. Adolfo Padreca alleged that the town is wasting taxpayer monies by putting up barriers on 199th, 202, and 205. The OIG determined that there was insufficient grounds to even investigate the complaint. Those are the current complaints that have all been closed against the town for fiscal year going up to 2014. And once again, the town has not been found in any violations, and one of 22 that was found to be fully ethically compliant. So that's good news. Came up, and this is for everyone out west, what's happening with the school? We get a lot of questions saying, what's happening with the school? Nothing is happening with the school as far as I can tell, and I can tell you, we've looked at the school report for 2015-16 school year, and they're not on that report. I've looked at 16-17, and they're not on that report. So I don't see any trucks moving up there, any activities out there. I've called the legal counsel for the school, who has yet to respond to my own inquiry. I've called Jody Perry, and she has no activity on the file either. So as relates to the school, I guess no news is good news, but we, we can't find anything going in the direction as if the school was going to be built. To the counter to that, we got a very lengthy public records request from Pembroke Pines, seeking all information that we have concerning our opposition to the school. So I don't know what that means, if I were a betting person, which I'm not, you know, I could imply that maybe things went a little south, and now they're trying to figure out where it went south. So, you know, that's the current status, no news for now, and we'll update you as we get something new. Other than that, Mayor, no further legal comments.
Thank you, Keith. That concludes item number eight. Item number nine? Andy, the floor is all yours. Administration comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a few things. One is, I've continually kept you all up to date and posted you on the developments in the settlement of the Resource Recovery Board, where we're one of 18 municipalities that were involved in an action against Broward County, settling the assets of the Resource Recovery Board, the old trash compact. The good news is that there was a, a small group from Weston, Fort Lauderdale, Miramar, Hollywood, and Sunrise negotiated an agreement with the county. Those five cities have previously passed and have ratified that agreement. This past Tuesday, the county, by eight to one vote, passed the agreement. So it's now time, we're gonna be bringing that before you probably, if we don't make it for the next meeting, certainly the first meeting in May, we've got 120 days to, to consider that action. Just a reminder, we are a very small player in that action, we are point eight-eight percent of the total, but it's, I think, plus or minus, from my memory, about $400,000 to us, so very positive, and we're certainly very happy to have kind of ridden along on that one, and, and so we'll have some, some funds coming in on that. Just a reminder that a week from tonight, we have our, at 7:00 o'clock, we have our farm workshop. It'll be the council combined with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. Staff is working on that, and we're working with the chair of the advisory board for, let's say, a presentation for council to give you guys an update on kind of where things started, where they are now. I'll tell you that certainly the intent from staff is that the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board will continue to do the heavy lifting on this, but there's some areas where they're kind of stuck. They need input on, on some policy decisions and guidance from the council. So we'll have that meeting next Thursday night. Hopefully, we'll be able to come to some decisions on, on where we need to proceed from there, and then you'll be able to kind of pass that back to that, to that board, and let them continue their work on the subject. And last but not least, I just want to remind you all that the Public Safety Grant is scheduled for the next meeting to come back. If there are questions or issues that you have for staff, certainly between now and then, please let me know. Otherwise, I know there may be some questions that council has that you'll need to debate publicly, but certainly, any, any support that we can give you from a staff standpoint, we're, we're happy to do that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, that concludes item number nine, administration comments. Item number 10, second reading of an ordinance. Russell?
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending objectives and policies within several elements of the adopted town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, pertaining to Broward County Land Use Plan consistency requirements, intergovernmental coordination, and local street connections, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, providing for recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Again, this is second reading, and requires a supermajority vote. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, back to you, counsel, for final deliberation. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, respectfully requesting the Broward County Planning Council to amend Southwest 184th Avenue on the trafficways plan and map, and the Broward County Metropolitan Planning Agency to amend the long-range transportation plan, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to effectuate the amendment of the trafficways map, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. There it is. Ready? Motion to approve. That's your item. I got a motion to approve, a second?
Yeah. You want me to talk on?
No, no, I just.
He made a motion.
No, we had a motion to approve.
Yeah. Nobody seconded it yet.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion to approve in a second. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we got a motion and a second to, to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Counsel, I see, Steve, you had your hand raised, and I'll get to you, Doug, right after Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment, that what this is about is currently on the county trafficways, they have 184th, that's a four-lane road. I think that as a town, we've realized that that four-lane road is not appropriate out there, from the standpoint of the noise, the traffic, the disruption to the neighbors that are there. And so what this is, the purpose of this is to voice to the county that we, as a town, have a resolution, that this really should be, at most, a one-lane each direction, a two-lane road, and, and so asking them to scale back their plans.
I was under the impression we'd already done this, and I guess apparently we couldn't find it or whatever, but, so I'm in support of it, because we can't locate it or don't know where it is, so doing it again, just as far as making sure when it, if it were ever to happen, that it would only be a two-lane road, so that's the reason I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Doug. Freddie?
Yeah, Doug, I think what you're referring to is in our comp plan, be a two-lane road, but we never have taken a resolution which we need to move forward.
That could be it, I'm not sure, but I just remember, we had addressed it in some fashion, in some way, and doing it officially this way, I'm good with that, too. I just want to make sure it got done.
I would be, I would recommend, Andy, and you can talk to them about it. I would, I would like to see the resolution once it's passed, sent to every member of MPO.
Okay, agreed.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, motion and a second to approve. Turn it over for, did I do public comment?
Yes.
You did?
I did. But you know something, Bob, listen, we violate Robert's rules all the time for public comment. I'll open back up for a public comment, because we always want to hear what you have to say.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm the chair of the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Committee, and we support this. I think the vote on it was six to one, there was only one individual dissenting, because he thinks we need more roads, because he doesn't believe this would create more traffic in that community. However, the rest of the, the group, we, we probably spent a good 40 minutes talking about this. This, the Drainage and Infrastructure Committee believes is very much against the wishes of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Second time, any additional public comment on this item? Seeing none for the second time, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second, and in council, you forwarded your comments. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, call a question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 12.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a work proposal with E-Sciences Incorporated for environmental services for the bacterial pollution control plan, authorizing the town administrator to execute the work proposal, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Andy, just as an explanation, please.
Yes, Mayor, this is an NPDES requirement. We're partnering with Cooper City and sharing costs with them. E-Sciences has been doing the testing previously, so we're just looking to continue working with them and continue to meet our requirements.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 13.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Straight Ahead Construction, Inc., to complete the drainage improvements along Southwest 54th Place, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, this is consistent with our drainage plan. It's been endorsed by the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, and we're piggybacking agreement with Straight Ahead, based on the very tight deadline we have on this, and I, and I just want to inform you that Straight Ahead has received just glowing recommendations from South Broward and others. And Cleat Sanier is available for more, certainly, technical explanation, should you need it, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is gonna take a little bit of time. New Orleansworth, 199th Avenue. This goes back six years, I believe, maybe a little bit longer. The council approved a three-phase plan for drainage on 195th, 196th. Phase one was funded, and then the bottom dropped out of the economy, and the recession began. Phase two and three were not. Each year, I asked what was happening, and nothing was happening, so I took it on as one of the orphan projects that I have kept alive by keeping it, talking about it. Well, last year, I was told the orphan project was going to the state, and it came back as one of the $1.2 million this state granted us. Well, today, I have found out, well, actually, it started over the weekend, and I asked one of our council members, Mr. McKay, to take a look at it, and I got a call from our town engineer, and, which got me quite upset, because he said, no, that is not what it was. Phase two and phase three, this has nothing to do with. While a piece of it is being done from 195th, 196th connection, it is part of a $450,000 infrastructure drainage project, which we have to have a matching grant on. I was told the $1.2 million that was granted, which this was part of, did not have any grants attached to it, and that was said on TV in front of this council. So now I find this has a matching grant. It's a $75,000, and they want $60,000 additional to run pipes south as connectors for the drywells that are there. But they are not going to connect the main piece, which is the piece from 195th east to the parkland that we have, which would drain all of the back properties of those that are on 195th, all the way to Griffin Road, on 194th, on the east and west sides of the road, and also the private area, and I can't remember what it is, between 3, 4, 5, and 195th, what that development is in there, it's called.
Frontier Trail.
What?
Frontier Trail, please.
Okay, friendly trails, whatever, frontier trails. Okay. And it's supposed to also give them some drainage in the future, when that park is developed. This was a piece that you had applied, and this was the logic that was being used, to put that pipe through. That pipe has been deleted in the plan that is before you this evening. The $75,000 that I was led to believe, here in front of this council, that phase two and three, which had already been approved by this council, was going to be completed. Now it's not. It's still an orphan, three times over now. So someone is throwing blindfolds up or outright lying. So someone is throwing blindfolds up or outright lying, or failing to say the truth.
I gotta get you to wrap it up, Newell.
So, we are now at a position where it has to be spent before June 31st, or we lose the money. That is my understanding.
May 31st, even sooner.
Okay, May 31st. You're at the eleventh hour. The contract's already been developed with the vendor. It's here for your approval tonight, and the blaze will start tomorrow. If you don't do it tonight, you lose the money, and that is my understanding. So, you've been conned. Thank you.
Thank you, Newell. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public, additional public comment, public comment is now closed. And for the record, I'm Clete, if you don't know, and I know that you have thirty, forty-five seconds to, a minute to update us on that information.
Very tall, Newell. Clete Sonier, town engineer, Poli Works Director. I would add that the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board approved these projects. They were on a list that Mr. Nabong had created, phase one and phase two and phase three. Those particular phases were added by me, just to distinguish between what had previously been improved over on 196, drainage improvements on 54th, and now phase two is what I'm calling it, just to distinguish it for Southwest one, I mean, 196. Now it's Southwest 195th. This is an essential part of a revised drainage system that will take drainage from southern part of 195th, pipe it to 54th over to Canal 13. That was not the original design, because the original design had those inlets going through private properties, through platted easements that were recorded many, many years ago, since has many structures, fences, trees, and therefore, we rerouted it to the north and to the west to Canal 13. That is what this project's for. If it does not go through tonight, then the other agreement we have for $454,000, which includes those infrastructure improvements on 195th, cannot be built because it wouldn't make sense. You can't connect to the main trunk line, which is Southwest 54th, which is this project being improved tonight.
So the plan that Newell describes be after this?
It can be amended, not amended, but it can be added on at a later date, but we don't have the funding for that.
Okay.
Frontier Trails Park would be an extremely expensive venture at this point, and we did not ask for that in this funding agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Clete.
Clete, do we have that, looking forward, we didn't apply to Tallahassee for anything additional this year for related to that, or no?
We have, but it was not included in those additional requests at this time. The project for Frontier Trails, Frontier Trails Park would have to be improved, the wetland mitigation, all those things associated with Frontier Trails, which I understand is several hundreds of thousands of dollars, would have to be put in place to be able to connect 194 through the park system drainage to 54th Place, and that would be a very expensive venture, and we did not request it.
Can't we, can't we piecemeal that project? That's not something we have to do, that whole project in one piece.
It would.
I mean, you've got to put it, the drainage stuff and improvement we're doing right now is an upgrade from what we have that's already there, that we're just doing a piece of to fix. So my question is, moving forward, can't we scale that down and do it in a smaller piecemeal way moving forward, that just not saying we don't have the money and not doing any of it?
If, if we go, well, to answer your question, yes. I'm sure we could do that. With the likelihood of the legislature approving a project that does not necessarily function once it's completed right away without having a long-term plan, they would then look at that as having to fund successive years, and maybe they may not, may or may not want to tie their hands to that, I don't know. We do have an existing pipe underneath 195th. It is 48 inches in diameter, a large trunk pipe, anticipating a future connection toward the east. So we can go off that eventually in the future if we need to and we want to.
That's also why we have a lobbyist.
I understand. I'm not saying no by no means. Councilmember McKay, I'm not.
All right. No, just, was the Drainage Board aware of that left turn, so to speak?
It is on the project list, which they adopted, yes. It is part of one of 28 drainage projects we have unfunded right now.
Well, most of them, most of our drainage plans are unfunded, no question, but clearly. I guess, I understand Newell's concern and issue on us setting it back from a long time ago on a chartered course, and then you all make a change, and we're not aware of it until it comes up to a point of a ninth hour, and we can't really say no or change anything about it. So I guess in the future, I guess we, the council, and I don't think I'm speaking for myself, I think I'm speaking for all of us, would like to be a little more informed ahead of time if we're making changes like that.
Steve? Clete, I'll be honest with you, I was a little surprised myself. I go to all the drainage meetings, and I, I live on that road. I've always tried to be a little quiet on this topic because I see all the time how the need for it, but, you know, oh, fix my road, I'm not, I'm not excited about that. So I appreciate everybody else's support for it, because it truly is needed. And what you're talking about is needed, there's no doubt about that. But when I was reading this over, I was surprised that I did not see a connection to the Frontier Trails piece, to be honest with you, because that, as Newell says, was part of phase two, always in my mind, that that was the next section. There, there was a phase one, you know, we, we probably ought to come up with a new name because I'm, you, you came up with phase one, phase two, not knowing that there had been a previous phase one, phase two, phase three, and there certainly was one before that. I'm, to be honest with you, I'm confused, so that's why I'm hesitating here, because I'm confused. I'm confused from the standpoint of the dollars that we're talking about, because the best I know, that road at 54th and 195th, the connection between what we have in place today and going to Frontier Trails is just basically going down the road. There may be, there may be some private easements in there, but I would be surprised because it's going down the road.
The swale.
Well, it's under, it's under the road, yeah. It should be under the road. So that's, that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm, I'm not 100% clear, although I know we have to vote on this tonight, and I'm sure, you know, I know generally what we're talking about, but I would really appreciate a picture of what we're talking about here, because I, I don't know how far down we're doing, to the south we're going. I don't know how many connections we're making. I don't know how big, I mean, I see that problem every rainy season, but, you know, it would be nice to be able to, you know, when I ride my bicycle, walk down the road, and residents come out and talk to me, I might be able to say, this is going to be solved, and this is, or this is not going to be solved. And I think a picture in this case would have been worth, you know, several thousand words to really understand what it is we're voting on tonight. And so that adds to my confusion as well. I know, I know the area probably as well as anybody up here, and I'm, and I'm confused on it, not to say that you all are confused, but I am, I'm just admitting it. And so I'm not, I'm not happy with where we are. I know we've got to vote. I know, I'm not, I'm not happy with exactly how we got here. I'm not happy about not understanding exactly what we're voting on, and, and I'm not happy in the timeframe that we've got no time to really understand it or fix it between now. I would like for you to, in detail, if we indulge me, to really walk through exactly what it is we're voting on tonight. I want to understand it before I vote.
Okay. Backing up a bit. Number one, the original request to the governor through our lobbyists included a list of drainage projects, and at no time was this phase three you're referring to included in that list of projects. I inherited that, so I carried that forward. The original plan called for an interconnect from the drainage structures that are on 5251, Southwest 195th, through private property to 196 drainage structures, which have a drainage connection to the C-13 canal. That's assumed. The other two were south of 54th.
That's not what I'm talking about, though.
Okay.
That's the piece I'm talking about. That's a whole different project, to tell you the truth.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
5600 block on 195th, connected through private properties to the inlets on 196 and then out to the canal. 5800 block connected through private properties, okay. Those three different projects had different reasons why they could not move forward, and the purpose of those projects was to allow drainage from 195th to get eventually out to the canal toward the west.
Right.
When we found out that it would cause a major delay in our funding agreement duration to get landowner approval and get those easements cleared, we decided, through the council of the Drainage Advisory Board, which I showed on a 24 by 36-inch plan, which I believe you received, showing the rerouting schematically of that drainage to the north, to 54th Place, and then over 54th Place out to the C-13, or Canal 13. Those, oh, and by the way, 5251 to the north, it was assumed there was a drainage easement there. There is no drainage easement there. There is actually no right-of-way on record for 195th north of 54th Place up to that, so we couldn't even route it south along the right-of-way line from that point. So, with that said, we went to the DEP, asked them to restructure the amended agreement so that we could use funds from the lost project of 5251 and lump that down into these projects to the south. From 5800 to 5600 to 5400 will now be a pipe connection along our right-of-way to 54th Place. That cost an additional amount of money, which we recoup from 5251, put there. We were also required, when we submitted to the governor, and this was all done prior to my arrival, that we, we had noted to the governor that we would match $100,000 of our money toward this agreement. Now, in the agreement, it does state that we are to match funds as part of that. It's my understanding. It doesn't say when we have to match those funds, so if we, if we submit our reimbursement forms and they pay us directly 100%, and wait until the tail end of the project before we have to start expending our funds, then we may very well recoup all the funding available for this project without having to spend any town funds, which is a good deal for us. Is that more than adequate to answer your question?
Okay, so what I heard you say is that we're, this project is going to put the drainage from 58th, basically, north to 54th?
5800 block, yes.
5800 block on 195th?
Yes, sir.
And connect with basically the storm drainage work that was done three or four years ago, that will then lead it to the Canal 13?
There is no connection. Right now, this project that we're doing will connect the existing inlets at the intersection, which go to nowhere, at 195th, and the inlets that are connected at 196 to an existing 24-inch culvert on the north side of the road to Canal 13. This project here, the revamp, is going to put pipe between the inlets at 195th to the inlets at 196, and an additional outfall from 196 over to Canal 13, so we'll have dual outfalls into the canal, increasing our capacity to full.
Steve, let me jump in for just a second. That pipe, that outfall pipe, is exist and is there, and we're replacing it to make it larger.
No, sir. It'll stay in place, and we're adding another 24-inch pipe on the south side of the road to increase capacity. That's the additional cost associated with tonight's agenda item. I might add that our engineer, our consultant, when he did the original estimate, estimated at about $12,000 more than we were able to get through a piggyback contract through this contractor.
Okay, so I've got the, I've got the pipe going from the 5800 block to 54th?
Yes.
I've got the pipe going on 196 on the south side of 54th, going from 196 to Canal 13?
Yes.
Are you saying there's another connection that's going in from 195th to 196 as well?
196, yes, sir.
On the north or south side of the road?
South side of the road.
On the south side of the road.
It is a pipe connection.
Okay.
24.
And that, on 196, there, on 195th and 196, if my memory serves me correctly, there are drains on all four corners of those two connections, and they all connect to one another.
Yes.
So what we're saying then is the drainage that is on the north side of 54th, which has been an issue, the way it's, the way it's supposed to happen today, it was a temporary solution, but it actually has worked reasonably well compared to the disaster it used to be, is those on 195th, those four drainage connections come together. They actually go down on three of the corners, they percolate up on the northwest corner, and then it, the water moves along a swale on above ground to 196, then drops down in the drainage that's on.
French drain.
Yep, yep, exactly, a huge French drain. Then it drops down into 196, then goes out that pipe that you, the original pipe that's been out there. So what we're saying now is that that water now will still flow the same way there, or will it? Or will it, at that point, will that water connect to the south side of 54th, go through the pipe, and drain eventually into the canal?
It will drain initially, if there's a localized storm, through the south side pipe more quickly, I would imagine, than the, over the, overland flow on the 196. So you might not get as much bubble up effect, and there will be surface water problems on the north side, problems in the sense that it would eventually take to get to the other inlets on 196. So this improvement, I anticipate, will increase the capacity of that drainage flow dramatically. It will drain much more quickly, more efficiently. We're adding 1,300 feet of pipe from 5800 to 54th Place to make this work. We are also adding inlets at 157 at the crossing to pick up drainage at that intersection as well.
At 57?
At 57th Place, yes.
One, one drain there, or is it the four corners?
It's going to be two drains on the west side of the road.
On the west side, the north and south?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh-huh. Any other? Well, Clete, is there any additional questions of Clete?
Thank you, Clete.
Appreciate it very, very much. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concern?
Just a, just a comment, Mayor, and that is, it sounds like this is painfully necessary, and it wasn't quite how we want it packaged, but that area really floods. I've been down it many, many times, and it, you need a canoe sometimes to get through there, and this will fix the overall area. I just, you know, the way it's packaged and the time issue is of concern, but we need to move forward with it, I believe.
Absolutely.
Compared to the time duration, the original intent in the $75,000 was only to connect the inlets on 54th and 195th to the inlets on 196 through a small pipe and maybe a swale connection using the existing bubble up you referred to, council member, on the north side. When we found out in the 11th, and then the, the funding agreement was tied to that schedule, which would have been a very short duration, ending in May, the revamp or the re-drainage connection was found out much later in the process, and we had to go back and get new design, new, new conceptual design, and new design, that took time. We have now, unfortunately, have run out of time, but the original agreement was tied to a very simple project. We still have to maintain that deadline date, even though we changed it radically. That's why I think we left our, I apologize for that.
Thank you, Clete. Any additional questions or comments or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second to approve. Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 14, approval of the minutes for the March 12, 2015 regular town council meeting?
Show move.
Second.
Can I also include the B, which is the workshop meeting minutes as well for March 12, 2015?
I got a, Russell, was that included in the correction?
If you'd like to make that motion to?
Let's do, let's do A first, then. We've already got a motion in a second to approve. Throw it out to you all, because I know you read the minutes, and you've corrected us before. Any comments? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, this is to approve the minute, approval of the minutes for the meeting on March 12, 2015. We have motion, second to prove. Russell, call a question.
Councilmember Breckers?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, and I included B as a separate motion, Freddie, because you had a question. Again, this is. Again, this is for March twelfth, two thousand and fifteen workshop meeting. Counsel?
Yeah, I think there was only one correction, was on the time, Russell and Nelson.
Correct. I'll make that.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve.
As, I'll make a motion as amended.
Second.
Motion approved as amended with the second. Any members of the public, again, 'cause I know you read these minutes, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second with the amendment. Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number fifteen, again, this was a add-on item that, that I added, and I appreciate it, and if you, just give me a couple of minutes, and I know you're very much familiar with this scenario, because we have talked about it previously. In fact, I brought this before the council, and I think we've had some subsequent conversations about it as well, several months ago, when sitting out there and watching what was going on and watching the mail delivery, this mail person having to jump over this concrete structure and jump, jump back across. But again, just historically, and Wes Clark, who is the homeowner that lives out there, I appreciate you taking the time yesterday to walk me through the process, and again, tonight, to confirm some of the things that we had, had talked about. And again, Wes Clark is here, the homeowner that's in the piece of property that's right in the middle, and one that's directly impacted by the installation of this concrete block. Again, this is down two hundred seventh, the fifty-fourth place. We all are familiar with the construction of that and why that, we believe, was constructed, obviously, for a potential for a future charter school. And it's good news, Keith, that there isn't anything yet that we see that's forthcoming, and did some research on that as well, and the school district always, for the subsequent year, confirms the location or new building of charter schools. And I will tell you that this charter school is not part of, of that plan. And again, real briefly, you remember years and years and years ago, the fence at one hundred ninety-ninth and Sterling Road, and there was never any cut-through traffic. So, both the residents of Pembroke Pines and Southwest Ranches benefited, because there was no cut-through traffic. Lo and behold, one day, for whatever reason, we don't really know, it opened up, and as a result of that, to make a long story short, we had a bunch of cut-through traffic. We had the Pines residents even calling us, were very upset about that scenario, and even had contemplated and talked about de-anexation, because they were so mad with Pembroke Pines, where once they had a quiet street, where the families could go out there and have a good time. Now, they were unable to do that, and became very, very unsafe. So, we know what's happened with, in subsequent years, and, you know, local agreements and the things that we negotiated with the Pines. But anyway, present day, we have a gate at one hundred ninety-nine, two hundred and two, and two hundred and fifth. And the reason I'm talking about that historically is because I'm trying to figure out the motivation behind what went on out there, and that's the only thing I can think about or think of as a result of what transpired, because, quite frankly, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So, I know you all have been out there, you've taken a look at, at this. You know the gates that exist out there. I think that, Andy, we can, it's safe to say that there are clickers that have been distributed, and there are Pines residents that are using those gates that are going in and out of there. But our concern, and my concern, I know this, all of ours are concerned, is what happened to Mr. Clark's property after this road was, was built, for whatever reason. It doesn't make any sense. And remember, the reason that we did what we did is because we wanted to stop that cut-through traffic. We're not talking about hundreds. I don't remember the traffic counts. It was into the thousands at one time. And in this particular case, and these concrete blocks were erected, we're talking about one house. Not only are we talking about Mr. Clark, but he's got an eighty-five-year-old mother lives there in a separate house that is medically very, very fragile. And I will tell you what exists out there right now. If you look at the distance between the fence and where these concrete blocks are, I'm not sure that an EMS unit can get through there, quite frankly. I am sure, I am sure, and Mr. Clark, correct me if I'm wrong, that if there's a fire out there, I can't imagine a fire truck being able to work its way through that. Additionally, I know that, I believe, Weekly owns a property to Mr. Clark's east. I know that he trailers things in and out of there, and as a result of the close proximity of the, of the concrete blocks that exist there, then in the process of trying to swing and miss the, the blocks and the gate, these also damaged a significant portion of Mr. Clark's fence. That's how close this is. So, anyway, going back out there yesterday, I was so darn mad, and motions have a tendency to give best of, of us sometimes, and I'm fortunate to access to Keith and Andy, because I had put Gay on alert, and I know Mr. Clark has somebody that's out there potentially to do the same thing. I said, "This is absolutely ridiculous. What is the motivation?" You know, it's not creating a cut-through traffic. We're talking about a couple of cars potentially that would impact Pines if Mr. Clark was able to move out and go east or west, because as of right now, with that, with those concrete blocks, the only thing he can do out, get, get, is that if, well, first of all, if he has a long truck, or if he's carrying a trailer, towing a trailer, I'm not sure if he can make the turn without a whole bunch of different maneuvering. To make a left, and he has to go out to two hundred ninth. He can't go east, because they have that blocked off, okay? But again, we're talking about one home. That's what we're talking about, one home, a couple of cars. So, there isn't, it's, there is no impact with regards to, with regards to traffic. And that's one of the reasons, obviously, after they opened one hundred and one hundred ninety-ninth and Sterling Road, was the reason we said, "Listen, if you don't want to protect your residents, that's entirely up to you, but darn it, we're gonna protect ours," because you have really created a, an issue where our residents aren't safe as a result of the cut-through traffic. So, anyway, getting back to looking at this and, and debating this, and here's what's being proposed now. They refuse to remove those concrete structures. And here's his recourse, if he decides to pursue it, and this is from the City of Pembroke Pines. Listen, we can, we can fix this, we can correct it, but there's only one way to do that, and that's to de-anex, for you to come to the City of Pembroke Pines. And if you de-anex and come to the City of Pembroke Pines, then there aren't any issues or there aren't any problems. And you think about that for a minute, and, and I know that speaking with Mr. Clark, that's something he's contemplating, because, quite frankly, right now, if you go out there, it diminishes significantly the value of that property, not to say the issue with, with access to his property, whether, you know, it be EMS, whether it be fire. I personally witnessed the postal worker having to climb over the concrete block and have to climb back. I know that Mr. Clark, as a result of that, now has moved his mailbox. So, it abuts the concrete structure so that the mail can be delivered while having to jump back and forth. So, you know, Pines given him the option of, well, you can de-anex and we'll fix this, you know, quite frankly, it just doesn't make any sense, because there is, there's no impact, none whatsoever. So, the only thing that can come up with is just, you know, Pembroke Pines being Pembroke Pines, and just can't get over what transpired out there. But what I'm telling you, Vice Mayor and Counsel, what's going on there is absolutely wrong. And I will tell you that, you know, I talked to Gay, and I talked to Mr. Clark, and that close, you just say, "Listen, move those concrete blocks. Put yourself in a position so that you move enough, so that you can get in and out of your property, and go east, you can go west. If you have an emergency, that emergency vehicles have access, the mail can be delivered." I mean, it's just common sense. It's just, besides me, that, that they would do this. So, needless to say, after I had a conversation with Keith and with Andy about expediting this, because this is absolutely unacceptable, and if we don't, I'm certainly gonna promote, and I'm not saying this is certainly the right avenue, because we want to do it the right way, but again, very, very close to taking those, those concrete structures out of there, so he can have access. So, and I'll let Keith touch on this with regards to this, this resolution and a mechanism to get it addressed and get it dressed expeditiously as possible and doing it the right way, but it needs to be addressed. It needs to be fixed. I don't think there's any question in my mind, what they're doing out, out there, and Keith will touch on this, that what they're doing is absolutely illegal as hell. You know, they can't do that. And then to say that if you de-anex, we'll make it go away, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me?
Let me join in with you, Mayor. It's appalling, and the fact that he has an eighty-some-odd-year-old mother out there, and if something happens in the rescue squad or a fire truck can't get there, you know, I'd say he has an outrageous lawsuit against them, and maybe us, too, but, so, I think we need to do whatever action we have to have those removed and give them access.
And in consultation with Keith as well, the fact that we're aware of that, that there is that potential, and because we're aware of it, we have an obligation, responsibility, I believe, Keith, and I know you're gonna touch on this, is to address and put them on notice and do what we need to do to get those concrete blocks removed, you know, and rightfully so, you know, at health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And again, what they did out there is, you're absolutely right, Doug, is absolutely appalling.
And I believe their gates are not on private property.
And that's something that they're looking at as well, and I think that that probably is the case. So, what I'm, before, I asked you to do anything. Again, I appreciate you allowing me to bring this on, bring this up as an add-on resolution to contemplate, because I'm very much interested in, in your thoughts. You know how I feel. I've been out there several times, and again, after yesterday, I just couldn't stand it anymore, but from, instead of me, you know, suggesting and incorporating a plan, obviously, that could be problematic, and that's to remove those and, you know, do what you need to do, so Mr. Clark has access, and believe me, I know he's contemplated that as, as well. That's how upset that, that he is. I want Keith to explain the, the process, an expedited process. So, this is something that's going to be addressed in the very, 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 very near future.
Well, let me add, jump in there also, one thing. I don't think just a couple of them need to be removed to give them access. I think they all need to be gone. You know, all those barricades that are up there. I don't know that the rest of the council's been out there. I know some of us have, but I've been out there, and it's unbelievable what they've done.
Just appalling. Freddie, and then I'll get to you, Steve.
Yeah. My question is, have we talked to Pembroke Pines?
Yes.
Who, who did we talk to?
The city manager.
And he said no?
Pounds old.
The city manager, Charlie Dodge, said he wouldn't remove.
The mechanism to address it, now, for the record, the mechanism to address it, and tell me if I'm wrong, Andy, is for them to de-anex. That's what we were told. And Andy, you had the conversation, so you can, for the record, let this council know what that conversation was.
Yeah, Mayor, de-anexing from Southwest Ranches and into Pembroke Pines was the option that was presented in the newspaper article on the story, and it came up in my conversation. But I personally spoke with Charlie Dodge, conveyed our concern over the life safety issue from that standpoint, and the hardship that was being placed on these people out there, and requested that they take the barricades down, that there are only the three properties there, one, one true residential property. I asked them to take it down. I said, "They have clickers at their gates. If they don't want to provide clickers, I understand that, but people need to be able to get in and out of their property." And, and he turned me down, because he said, "If they had access, then they could exit through Pembroke Pines," and he couldn't allow that.
We're talking about a couple of vehicles, you know? That's, that's the impact that, that's just, the explanation just absolutely makes no sense whatsoever. There's another motive, and I think we have a pretty good idea what that, what that is. I'm gonna get to Stephen, and I'm gonna get to you, Freddie.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've, I've certainly been out there, I've seen it. One of the things that I've been asking for, and I don't know where we are with it, it's really, it's annoying that it's taken this long, is those barriers are half on our property. Why in the world have we not moved them at least, so that they're a hundred percent on Pembroke Pines' property? Why are we supporting it? I, I mean, I think we should be able to do that immediately. I don't know why we, and I've been asking for that, honestly, I mean, I don't wanna, but I've been asking for that for a couple of months now, to move them, get somebody out there to move them, and I'm not hearing anything back on it, I don't know why, but I think that needs to be done immediately. At least that way, I think it, it, it'll, it'll open up a little bit. I'm not, I'm not saying that's the final, the best, you know, I'm not saying that's the end of the line, but why are we entertaining them, even for, for a moment, allowing them to put those barriers on our side of the street? You know? If they want to put barriers, at least they gotta put them on their side of the street. I don't know why we can't move them. Why can't we not move them immediately? I mean, I've been, I've been asking for that for two months.
I don't know that there's a big benefit to move them six inches or a foot.
It's not six inches, Doug. Those things are about, those things are two, two and a half feet wide at the bottom. So, you move them over, it does two things. To be frank, I hate to say it on TV, to be frank, though, you know, one thing is it gives the full lane to our side, and you know, emergency vehicles are used to going down a full lane. Right now, they don't even have a full lane at this property. At least that gives them a full lane. The second thing it does is it takes away a good third of the road on the Pembroke Pine side, which if I was in Pines, I would be pretty annoyed about that. So, why don't, why don't we do it? I don't understand why we haven't done that already.
And that's why we're sitting here having this conver, listen, it was up to me, quite frankly, after yesterday, to take them the hell out of there, because, but again, we wanna do...
I was gonna say, if we just take them out, let them through us.
The right way. I saw Keith rolling his eyes, but that's how upsetting it gets. It just defies the logic. We don't want them to cut through, you know, the Pine side. We're talking about a couple of vehicle, it's absurd. It's absolutely ridiculous. Ridiculous. So, that's one of the, the issues, Steve, with regards to moving those immediately to at least, until we get this thing addressed appropriately, at least there's a little bit more room, if in fact that is an opportunity to, to do that. And Freddie, I apologize, I know that you had some things to say.
You know, we're neighbors, you know, but it seemed like all we're doing is fighting. It seemed like we could sit down with these people and talk some of these things out. We're not gonna get anywhere having our attorneys talk back and forth to these people, unless we got a hell of a lot of money, but we ought to be able to sit down and talk to our neighbors. That's what I'm saying. We're living in a town. We brag this, we brag that, yet we're fighting with them, we're fighting with Western, we're fighting with everybody in our town. And instead of, you know, I say we need to start some negotiations, instead of, every time it comes up, what can we do legally? Let's try a little bit arbitration.
Yeah. I'm in agreement with Freddie that we need to talk, but I thought we already been down that road, that we've already talked to them, we've already asked them, we've already, you know, taken a position that this is a very bad thing, and basically, we've been rebuffed, you know, unless I got the facts wrong here, and, you know, why they're not moved. Steve, as you indicate, I think Keith can add something to that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll add to a lot of this. First off, we knew about this issue probably in about April of two thousand and fourteen, when they dropped the barricades. Mr. Clark, at that point, had hired his own attorney, who was dealing with the matter, and quite frankly, that's why we didn't bring him before you, because, you know, we love the fact that he was handling it by himself, we would be happy to ride his coattails, but, you know, like anything else, it's expensive, and I think you probably learned quite early on how expensive engaging counsel at traditional rates is. They wrote some letters back and forth, demand letters back and forth, I saw several, asking Pines to allow him to have access to his roadway, all of which were rebuffed. At that point, Andy Burns, I got calls from your attorney, I spoke to her, I did my own research, I discovered that that roadway cross segment was a platted roadway. It's not even something that was just built like half our roads by the residents back then. It was a platted roadway, ten feet being, Southwest Ranches, ten feet being a Pines. It's a real narrow roadway. It's twenty-foot right-of-way cross-section. A hundred percent, it was dedicated in the plat for use of the public. There's no questions about that. Mr. Clark, or your predecessor in interest, at one point had a litigation, when a, a fence was put in the middle of the right-of-way, they won that litigation and said, "You cannot block this right-of-way." So, it's already been down that path before, you know, at, at another time. His attorney sent Pines the settlement in that lawsuit, advising Pines that you cannot block off this, this intersection. For those of you who have not been out there, and those of you who are watching on TV, this is not a situation where a road has been closed, okay? This is driving down a two-lane street, and someone putting up a giant jersey barrier directly on the center line of the roadway to block someone from being able to access another part of the roadway, limiting your access point to probably anywhere from eight to, you know, five feet, depending on what portion of the roadway that you're trying to go down to access your home. In fact, Andy and I went back out there the other day, and for anyone who wants to go there, you drive in, you get stuck, and then you have to back up a huge segment of roadway to even try to get out of a public road. I mean, there's no even way to turn around within there. So we knew about this, but it was handling, being handled by yourself, Mr. Clark, in the traditional legal way, so we were standing back. Finally, you had enough, you couldn't, you know, continue the way you were proceeding, and it came back to us and asking the town to please assist in the process. During that period of time, Andy reached out to Mr. Dodge, and Mr. Dodge told Andy, as he stated previously, that we are not going to allow him to have access, you know, he can de-annex. In addition to that, the, that was confirmed in newspaper articles when this matter came up as well. We have called Sam Goran's office and spoke to Sam, we've advised him, you know, "Come on, just go out there and look at it, this is 100% illegal. If all municipalities started doing this, you know, it would be Germany all over again with barricades up on every border, you know, between east and west." It's not like a road closure, it's an actual border wall that's been put up to wall off Southwest Ranches from Pembroke Pines. That's essentially what they created. So Mr. Goran said to us, as latest today, "Thank you for your concern. If you'd like to put it in writing, and we'll be happy to consider it." Been down this road before, you know? This is not a Pembroke Pines/Southwest Ranches battle like a contract that was breached that will require tons of discovery. This is just a simple legal issue. To say to a judge, "Can a municipality put a Jersey barrier down the center line of a public road to prevent access between, between the two sides of the road?" It, it's never been tested before because the reality is, no one's tried to do this before. It's walling off, you know, essentially, your entire border, and it, it's never occurred. So, you know, what we have before the council, after the mayor asked to resort to self-help, and we said, "Absolutely not, and no, you do not want to be the one getting sued. You always want to be on the offensive rather than the one defending." So we asked the mayor, "Please, please do not touch the barriers. Instead, let's go in for an emergency injunction, require Pines to immediately remove them, and during that period of time, you know, then we can bring up at that point the issue whether or not they can legally do it." It's not a situation where tons of discovery and asking questions about, you know, "Why'd you do it?" or anything like that. This is just, does a governmental entity have the right to put up a wall in the, in the center line of a roadway on a public road? In response to Councilmember Bright Cruz's questions, we don't know where that's located. Andy requested an as-built survey, they've been out there and they've surveyed the site. I personally believe that Pines had to have had a surveyor out there when they put down those barriers, okay? I don't think they could have just willy-nilly dropped them, even though some of them look like they are, because they're really haphazard out there, but I think it would have been crazy if they did that, but you never know, okay? You never know.
Well, I'll just tell you that, to me, it looks like it goes right down the middle of the road, for the majority. Now, when it gets down the end, then it, you know, it curves around.
It starts curving off in certain sections.
But it looks for the majority of it goes right down the middle of the road. So, but my point is, you know, it would seem logical that the line is down the middle of the road, and therefore, it should be moved onto the Pine side.
It is possible, but we don't know. So instead, the surveyor went out there, I think we're waiting right now for the survey to be drawn. Andy, do you have an update on when that's supposed to come back to us?
I don't. We're doing everything we can to try to expedite it. I, I don't have a, a date as, as we sit here right now.
But I don't know, Mr. Clark, you probably saw the surveying crews out there. It's an as-built survey, so it's a different type of survey. It's not just someone saying, "Okay, it's a 20-foot cross-section." They actually have to draw every barrier and where it's located so that you can see what side of the right-of-way it's on, and then incorporate that into the municipal boundary lines. So, you know, after dealing with all this, and the mayor, the mayor asked us, and, and I know Councilmember Bright Cruz, you sent 100 emails, too, but no, none of them know that as well, you didn't try to resort to self-help, that's the only difference. We, we put the item on the agenda for your consideration, which is, is pretty simple. It's an authorization to, if you choose to proceed in this venue, to go to court and say to the court, "Is it legal to put a barrier in the middle of the center line of a roadway?" And that being said, the reason why this is even a more pressing concern is, I don't like to bring up medical issues, but Mr. Clark, if you don't mind, you know, they've mentioned a little bit that he does have his mother who, who lives at the property with him. She's 85 years old, if I, if I read correctly the emails. She has one kidney, the way that I understand it, and a heart condition. There is no doubt in anyone's mind that it is physically impossible to get any emergency vehicle down that road. It's not wide enough. It's not wide enough to, even if it's closed down, scratching half the vehicle, it couldn't get back out because there's no place to get out over there. So, you know, it, it's become a life safety issue, we need to figure out how to address it. It's been very disappointing that a, a simple call to Pines and just saying, "Hey, move the barricade to just allow Mr. Clark to access the road. We're not asking you to allow everyone else in our town to access your road, but he lives on this street, you know, allow him to access it." And I also will tell you, I'll assure you, that if you go out there, his property value, which means our taxes, have dropped substantially as a result of how his property looks like. I mean, seriously, his property looks like a war zone when you go out there now. I mean, that's, I, I implore anyone to go out there and look at it. It is, it's never been seen before, and as part of, if we go forward, we will request a site visit for a judge, because we don't even believe that a photograph can do any justice to it, that you actually have to see it by yourself to even believe that a municipality would do that to another municipality. So I'm here to answer any questions. Russell, if you could please read the resolution into the, the title, because we don't even have a motion, we just started on this, and really need one for discussion.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing for findings of fact, providing for a declaration that there is an immediate danger to the health, safety, and welfare of the public, requiring immediate action, providing for authorization and direction to the office of the town attorney to file an action in equity seeking both mandatory and prohibitory injunctive relief against the City of Pembroke Pines, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Seconds. Got a motion and a second to approve, and one question, Keith, timeframe-wise. When I hear an emergency injunction, that means something really, really quickly.
Correct.
So when we say really, really quickly, so that we don't get the bulldozers out there to move it, what are we talking about?
If we file the action next week, I, I need some backup documentation that Andy is getting ready, which is essentially the demonstrative evidence to attach to complaints so you can see it. I need the survey, I need to actually show them where it is so that there's no question. So, you know, we're trying to get that as quickly as possible. The minute we get that, we'll file, we'll immediately set it for an emergency hearing, you're looking within a week before to go before a judge on the removal. That will not be a permanent injunction. That will be just telling the judge, "Remove the barricades until the legal issue has been decided whether or not they're allowed."
Counsel? I know we got a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Just want to make sure that everybody's on board. As you had heard, Freddie, they've reached out on many different times, and even the homeowner, Mr. Clark, has tried, and nothing's happening out there. So it's not a situation, having reached out, explained the situation, his mom, 85 years old, the medical being very, very fragile, so that, that attempt has been made, and obviously without any results. So this seems like the most appropriate at this time, barring sending a, a dozer out there to physically remove them, and it seems like the, the appropriate and proper mechanism to get it addressed. And I can't, listen, I've been wrong, but I can't imagine that Mr. Clark doesn't get some relief here in a very short period of time after the judge does an assessment evaluation, hopefully goes on-site, because, as Keith said, pictures doesn't do it, it just doesn't do it justice. You have to go out there and see it, and if the hair doesn't raise on the top of your head, then there's something, something wrong, you know? And I, I like that idea to get a judge out there, but again, we got a motion and a second, and would appreciate your support, and get this situation resolved for, for Mr. Clark because it's the right thing to do.
Keith, wouldn't we have the power to go out there, I mean, the right to go out and remove them for safety reasons?
No.
What?
No.
I was there today. I went out there and looked at it, I, I seen the situation, and it is a safety reason. You know, our town's taken a, a risk that we could be sued.
Yep.
Because it's been brought to our attention, that it's a safety, and I think we need to go out and move the things.
I mean, to, to respond to that, we will be putting Pines on notice, and their insurance carrier noticed that if anything happens, as a result of it, that they're going to be held fully liable. But if the argument is it's their property and, and we don't know, again, 100% where those barriers are located, I'm not going to enable the town to resort to self-help at this time until the judge says, "Yes, you can," or, "No, you can," because I don't want to be Pembroke Pines. I want to do the right thing and have the, the court decide.
I hear you. And with regards to that timeframe, Keith, a week to 10 days, I think that that is expedited, and that satisfies me for now, and I hope for you as well, Mr. Clark, but I'm gonna, if there isn't any additional questions, comments, or concerns, I'm going to call the vote, and hopefully that she can be a patient a little bit longer because we're on your side, and we apologize what's happening out there to you, and we're going to go and put up a fight on your behalf, because what you're being subjected to is despicable, absolutely despicable. So with that being said, absolutely, again, we have a motion and a second to approve this, we always want to hear public comments, so.
Freddie, you know Charlie Dodge. If you think you can get anywhere with him, then you should make an appointment and go see him. This is a piece of apple pie, this town, and everybody's got their fork, and everybody's willing to take and dig into it till there's nothing left. And you have to stop that kind of stuff. You can't just let that go on.
I still say we need to go out and move the concrete things out of the road. If they want to sue it, let them sue it, because suing is not everything else. But if we, we, I was out there today, it's a personal reason. The gentleman is, is got a danger, if his mother gets sick, they can't get to her. If I was him, I'd go, "Hire me a piece of equipment and move the things out of the road." That's what needs to be done.
We don't have to hire a piece of equipment, there's enough in this town. What I'm saying, Freddie, is they, we have insurance. Is anybody willing to risk that lady's life? I, I'm not. I'm not. I mean, just say the word, and you know what? Sometimes it's, it's better to ask for a little bit of forgiveness than permission. But what I'm saying is, you said we're fighting with everybody. That was the thing that I really wanted to address. You're always going to have that. This is apple pie. Everybody loves apple pie, and everybody wants it, and you have to fight really hard to hang on to it. And if it means stepping on a lot of toes and hurting a lot of people, well, that's what you're willing to do. And I want to tell you something, this town will fight till there is no fight left. And if you want a machine out there, all you have to do is say to your neighbor, "God, it would be nice if a machine showed up there and just moved it." And you know what, Freddie? You would never have to say another word. That's all you got to say. We have the power in this town to shut Mr. Dodge down any day, anytime. He doesn't intimidate people. He intimidates his residents. He gets after them. He doesn't pay our rent, he doesn't pay our taxes out here, and he doesn't really mean squat to any of us. And if a letter was sent, and he was asked to do this for the safety of a resident, and he didn't do that, you know what that tells me? That is a low, low person that's going to let something personal like, "I'm better than you, Pembroke Pines rules." That's Charlie's attitude, that's his mentality. Well, that's not ours. So like I said, all you people have to do is say, "God, I wish that wasn't there. I wish it was in Pembroke Pines." You know something? Wishes do come true. I know this for a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Good evening. The problem with Pines, just to say, it started long before we were ever a town. I've been out here over 35 years, and there was a problem then. So the issue with Pines is that we became the mouse that roared, and they didn't like it. This gentleman's mother is 85 years old. I lost my parents. I'm going to tell you, I don't envy his situation. I don't envy his situation of having to deal with what he's dealing with, but 10 days is too long for me. So I tell you, if God forbid something happens, get her medevac out of there on the Pembroke Pine side of the road and send the bill to Pines. And that's it. Just get her out of there and take care of her.
Any other members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is, is now closed. Counsel, I know we have a motion and a second, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, and I'm, I'm detecting a, a building of, of a majority, that if this doesn't get done in the very near future, I suspect that it will get done in the very near future. Whether we do it the right way, and I agree with you, Keith, that that's what we're supposed to do, or we do it because it's the right thing to do, and this should be zero tolerance for this nonsense. So with that being said, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Counsel, appreciate the, the support. That concludes all the agenda items for this meeting, and this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.